Well, good afternoon. Wow, that was okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that very much. We are so excited to have you here today for our special recognition ceremony. This is our third of the year 2023, and what a wonderful crowd we have today. This is a time where we can come together with people in our community. We can recognize certain groups or individuals. We take time to recognize our board appointments, who are so vital and necessary to our community, and also a time to recognize our employees of the City of Lubbock. So, thank you for taking time out of your afternoon to come. We feel like this is more of a special occasion than trying to run people through at the beginning of a council meeting. We have actual time to recognize you, take some photos, and then spend some time having some wonderful cookies. Thanks to Addison, Matt, Kristen, and the staff for putting this together every quarter. We really could not do this without you. So, we're gonna get started. We've got some really cool stuff today. And as a reminder, we will do this again in December. Usually have some pretty good talent here in music at that time. So, if you haven't been through one of these before, this is how it will work. We will start with special recognitions. We will call your name and ask that you come up to the front. We will have a few words to say about what the recognition is for. We will have a certificate for you, and then we will take a few photos. And then different council members will be able to come up for different individuals. With me? Everybody clear? All right, this sounds good. All right. First, we want to re-- is my time up? They're like, "Stop talking." We have World Lemer Day that we are celebrating. This is outstanding public service to our community. Where is Gianna Trider? All right, come on up. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Hello.
This is Gilligan.
This is Gilligan. The professor and Marianne are here somewhere. If you did not know, lemurs are an endangered species from Madagascar, as well as a popular exotic pet in the United States. And although they're very adorable-- A little nervous today. Is he nervous?
This is his first public appearance.
All right, so Gilligan's making his first appearance off the island. And although they are adorable, they are still undomesticated and can pose a danger to even the most experienced of caregivers. So, in the response to the challenges lemurs face, Lubbock's Gianna Trider founded Ringtail Ranch Lemer Rescue and Educational Center, right here in Lubbock, America. The ranch seeks to rehome abused, abandoned, and unmanageable lemurs, and currently houses more than thirty. It is fitting to recognize Gianna and the Ringtail Ranch Lemer Rescue for giving neglected and abandoned lemurs in West Texas a safe, forever home and educating the public on the dangers of owning an exotic pet. Gianna works tirelessly for the well-being of those endangered lemurs, and it is my honor to present this special proclamation. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the great city of Lubbock, recognize September the nineteenth as World Lemer Day. And in Lubbock, ask all citizens to acknowledge and applaud Gianna and the Ringtail Ranch Lemer Rescue and Educational-- Educational, let me get it right. It's Educational. Center for their many years of hard work and dedication to the preservation of this exotic species, and we encourage the citizens to visit the Ringtail Ranch to see those beautiful and unique animals up close. That's dated this fifth day of September of 2023. Let's give it up for Gianna and what she's doing in front of the room. So, Gianna, real quick though, before you sit down with the Educational Center, can just anyone show up? Can they come visit? What's the protocol here?
So, we are a private facility. We do operate by appointment. We do consider the animal's needs. We don't want to overwhelm them. So, we don't just have a private facility for tours. We do it by appointment. You can call, find out information on our website, ringtailranch.com, and we welcome everyone to come out and let us out. Our doors.
All right, thank you very much. We really do have a zoo here today. So, next, this is an incredible thing we get to celebrate here today. The accomplishments of Threads of Love Ministry Program. If I could find Ms. Edith Dimple Davis. Curtis. That's you. How are you? Come on over here. Well, who all here knows what Edith does in our community? Anyone? Look at that. All right, let's do it right there. Let's just start off right there. She's like, "I know, I know." So, for those of you that don't, today we honor an extraordinary citizen of Lubbock. Ms. Davis, age thirty-one, has provided immeasurable comfort to families in Lubbock and who are experiencing the heartbreaking loss of an infant through her custom-made angel gowns. As an expert sewer and a volunteer in the South Plains quilting community, Edith has become an icon, and truly an icon, of compassionate service in our city, actively contributing to various organizations like the Stitches of Love Program and the Salvation Army. And since 2006, in the last seventeen years, her dedicated work with the Threads of Love Ministry Program has resulted in the creation of over five thousand angel gowns. So, the City of Lubbock profoundly is profoundly grateful to you, Ms. Dimple, I should say Ms. Dimple, not Edith, for your enduring commitment to alleviating the sorrows of bereaved families and for your continued contributions to our community. So, it is my honor to present you with this certificate. And say now fore, we, the mayor and the city council of the great city of Lubbock, do recognize and extend a special recognition to Edith Dimple Davis, and ask all of the citizens to join us in praising her for the devotion to mending the hearts of those suffering loss, and thank her for the years of her generosity, kindness, and service to bereaved families in the area, and wish her all the best as she continues for years to come to care for the people around her. That's dated the September fifth, 2023. Let's give her a round of applause. Thank you, Ms. Davis. All right, this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem Patterson Harris.
Good afternoon, everybody. Oh, man, that was sad, and that would be all right if you were just asking the lady next door for a piece of peppermint candy. But that's not what we're doing here today, right? What we're doing is we're celebrating some good stuff and some good times right here in Lubbock, Texas, USA. And so, when we say "good afternoon," it's because we are so excited and we know that this time is special, huh? Let's try that again, so I say, "Good afternoon, everybody!" That's what I'm talking about. It is indeed a pleasure and honor for me to offer this recognition this afternoon. If I could call Mr. Sam Thomas to the front. He is the current Lubbock Dunbar International Alumni Association. And I'm a member, you know? But it's just such a long name. So, are there any other Panthers in the building? Okay, you don't know what you're missing. Well, I'll let you know that if you cut me, and if you've ever seen "Blood Without Oxygen," it's burgundy-- for a reason. I am-- it is my time to speak to the one-hundredth year anniversary for Dunbar High School, later named Dunbar Struggs High School. And they've given me all this stuff to say, but I'm not paying any attention to it. Because I know this, Dunbar holds a special place in my heart. My grandmother attended Dunbar. My mom, my aunts, my uncles, except for one, attended Dunbar. Myself, my sister, and my brother, and my cousin, we attended and graduated from Dunbar. I was born and raised in the Chapman Hill Neighborhood Association. Neighborhood-- I'm a member of the association, but in the neighborhood. And at any given time or any given moment, you could hear the boom-boom-boom and the horns playing of that Dunbar Panther Band. Panther Pride, Panther Pride, Panther Pride. And what it did is it taught the young children who were so excited that they were making their way, this band was making its way through the community. So, we were excited, and it would get us pumped up, and we had etched in our minds that maroon color. But also, the people living across the street, across the way, down, around the corner, were also somehow attached to that same school. There was Ms. Walker across the street, who was the cafeteria manager. There was Ms. Edna Ray Walker down the street, who was the student attendance teacher. There was Roy Roberts, who was the band director, who lived down the street from Dunbar. There was E.C. Struggs, who attended church with myself and my family and was the first principal of Dunbar Schools, and then later High School. There was Ms. May Simmons, who also was connected to Dunbar High School. She was my second-grade teacher and lived right down the street from Isles Elementary. But if you've ever seen the campus of Isles Elementary School, that building that is the furthest to the south, that was Dunbar High School. Dunbar School, and then Dunbar High School. So, what I'm saying is, is that this institution of Dunbar High School touched a lot of lives. And out of that building came city council members. Jazz artists, Tom Braxton. Doctors like Dr. Damon Hill. Educators like Mr. Sam Thomas. Tons of educators came through those hallways. So, what I'm saying is, that institution impacted a lot of lives. And after so many years-- I don't know how many years that it's been since I was there-- it still holds a special place in my heart. It still holds a special place in the community. And for those of us who realize that that institution is no longer a high school, but has been shifted to a junior high school, there's still the desire for those of us who were Panthers back in the day to want our children and grandchildren to walk through those halls. There's something special because we had to look our best every day. And there was no yelling and screaming because Mr. Struggs wasn't gonna allow it, but Mr. Roberts, who was my principal, wouldn't allow it either. So, I wanted to take the time to say just how important and so many-- such an impact that Dunbar High School has made over the one hundred years that it-- since it's been its inception, should I say, and that lets you know that there's so many people who walk these streets or drive the roads and walk the halls, even of this city's citizens' tower, have come through the way of Dunbar High School. And so, it is my honor to present this special recognition. And I'll end by saying, now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the great city of Lubbock, Texas, do hereby recognize Dunbar High School's one-hundredth anniversary in Lubbock, and ask that all citizens to join us in thanking them for their many years of dedication, commitment, and service to students and families, to congratulate them on a century of excellence, and to recognize historical significance and the pride that Dunbar High School, later Dunbar Struggs, has in our entire city. It's dated today, the fifth day of September, 2023. And Mr. Sam, as soon as they let me loose on this council stuff, I'm gonna be attending all of the meetings. If you would join me in wishing a great anniversary.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Fellow Lubbock citizens, it is a true honor. Back in 1923, Dunbar only went up to like the tenth or eleventh grade, and E.C. Struggs added the twelfth grade, and it became a fully accredited high school. And so, that is why we are doing this as our bicentennial celebration. I am the president of the Dunbar Alumni Association. And after Dunbar was changed to a middle school, every two years, we do an all-school reunion. We've got people who left here so they'd never come back. We've had people that graduated, gone as far as Africa, and they came back to the reunion. Up until a few years ago, I was living in San Diego. I tried to come back as many of them as I could. And we had to cancel the last couple because of COVID. We are now in the process of working on doing one for next year. We missed the centennial year. But we've been averaging anywhere from two to five hundred people who returned. A good number of them still live in Lubbock, but a lot of us were traveling back and forth. My first three years of teaching school, I actually taught here in Lubbock, Texas, Stewart Elementary School. And like a lot of us who said, "When we left, we weren't coming back," I moved to San Diego. My high school sweetheart brought me back, but it's always been home. But this honor, this evening, this will be-- I will scan it into my computer, and I'll be sending it to Dunbar graduates, wherever they may be in these United States. We want to thank you for this honor.
I was nervous because I didn't know if someone had had someone lurking in the back, listening to me, and we're gonna report back to some of my previous teachers. And now, I'm trying to find Ms. Cheryl Gershaw Thomas.
She's not there.
Well, come on up. Well, get on up here. Yes. Alrighty, thank you so much. And I'll let you know that this group is here because we're celebrating the fact that in 1948, the Heart of the Plains Kennel Club has been-- since then, has been an integral part of Lubbock's community for decades. It was because of some of my opportunities to attend some of the-- what do you call them, the trials and things like that?
The dog shows.
Yes, that I was able to learn what a bouvier actually is. I didn't know, but Cheryl has bouviers. That's what she raises.
And chow-chows.
And chow-chows, yes, she has chow-chows as well. So, I'd like to share with you, and in the end, I want you to help us celebrate. As I said, founded in 1948, the Heart of the Plains Kennel Club has been an integral part of Lubbock's community for decades. Dedicated to responsible dog ownership and various dog sports, they hosted licensed American Kennel Club shows, obedience, and rally trials. The club has been instrumental in giving back to the community through their support of local animal shelters like the Morris Animal Foundation and the City of Lubbock Animal Shelter. Their outreach initiatives, such as the Kids Art Show at the Dog Show and Dog Appreciation Week, further their mission by educating the public on responsible pet care. I want to say that again for the folks in the back who didn't hear.
And those beyond that.
Exactly. Further their mission by educating the public on responsible pet care. That is so important in our city these days. Now, it is my honor to present the Heart of the Plains Kennel Club with the special recognition certificate. And at the end, it reads, "Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of Lubbock, Texas, do hereby extend a special recognition to the Heart of the Plains Kennel Club's seventy-fifth anniversary." Wow. And encourage all citizens to join us in commending the club for its long-lasting impact on responsible dog ownership, canine sports, and the community, and wish the club nothing but success as it continues to serve as an inspiration to the citizens of Lubbock, especially those who value the bond between humans and dogs. It's dated today's date, the fifth day of September in 2023. If you'll join me. And we're here with Joelynn Ping and the gang. We got it done. Would you like to say anything? Okay.
That's one way of clearing the room. You know, the next group that we're going to recognize often is recognizing you. And it's a very special group of people that often get unnoticed, or we don't do what we do for thanks. We do it because it is our job and it's our passion. And I'm so proud today to recognize my colleagues. And they come from various mediums, from print to TV, some radio. And I'm really excited that I get to be a part of these folks and have been for quite some time. My own mentor, Ernest F. Barton, the late Ernest F. Barton, was on the first Spanish radio station in Lubbock, Texas. And the day that he started his station, the 1970 tornado happened. How about that? And then, he also started a publication. And so, his experience was something that I got to share and to also be a part of. With that, today, I want to recognize several different groups, and I'm gonna have them all come up at one time. We're all gonna stand in the middle because, you know, during COVID, we worked collectively for the greater good to inform our public on various topics, whether any type of news, good and bad. These folks often will work for the greater good of our city. So, with that, let me start introducing these groups, and they're gonna come up here. We'll stand in the center, and then I will read this awesome proclamation. If I can have KLBKKMAC, KCBDKJTV, Senior Link, El Editor, Latino Lubbock Magazine, I'm right here. Town Square Media, KRFEAM580, The Daily Torridor, The Avalanche Journal-- let me read, The Lubbock Avalanche Journal, and Texas Tech Public Media. And I just want to also point out that several of our staff members come from these different stations and mediums, so we're also proud of our public information office. Thank you, guys. Wow, we're such a great team, aren't we? Y'all squeeze in. And you don't usually and always see their faces, but they're the ones-- get over here. I know, we'll do a selfie in a little bit. You're part of the group. So, media organizations and journalists in Lubbock serve as an essential pillar of our community, as you well know. This special recognition acknowledges their unwavering dedication to providing accurate and timely information, and we all try to beat each other's time, upholding the critical values of freedom of speech and playing a significant role in public awareness. Through their contributions, our continuous efforts, we shape public discourse, hold leaders accountable, and significantly, that is, contribute to the well-being and education of the Lubbock community. It is my very special honor to present this special recognition, and it reads like this. Now, therefore, we, the mayor, your city councilwoman, Kristi Martinez-Garcia, and the rest of the city council of the great city of Lubbock, do hereby recognize our Lubbock media partners and ask all citizens to join us in celebrating and supporting the hard work and commitment of our media organizations, which, by the way, several of them have celebrated-- KLBK, how many years did y'all just do? KCBD? AJ? Latino Lubbock Magazine, almost eighteen, El Editor. And Southwest Digest, owned by TJ Patterson, who was one of our council members? You see? We do it with our hearts, and the dedication is so evident. Thank you all for being here. Let me finish reading this. "We ask all citizens to join us in celebrating and supporting the hard work and commitment of our media organizations, to applaud them for their high ethical standards and the role they have played in keeping us informed, and to encourage everyone to support local news." With that, it is dated this fifth day of September, 2023. Please give them a round of applause. KRFE, did we make it? Hold on, Steve. I do. Always trying to make the news, Steve Massingill. Just kidding, Steve, you know, I love you. The next part, this is very special to me. As you know, we are embarking on Hispanic Heritage Month. I am a Latina, and I have been a part of this community most of my life. And I take a lot of pride in that. And I was, I think, between several council members and I, we worked multiple jobs. Most of mine are free. And, but it's because I believe in serving our community, and I take so much pride in wanting to make sure the Hispanic community does not go underrepresented or unnoticed. We've contributed a lot to this community. And if you ever want to learn a little bit more about our history, I did write a historical narrative on migrant labor camps, and it is located in Otsland Park. And it is a wonderful read, so I hope that you'll take the time to read that. But the National Hispanic Heritage Month, which, before we get started, let me invite all of our guests to come up here. If you came with a group or if you were representing the Hispanic community, come on up, and please stand in the center. If you just want to be Hispanic, come on in. We'll take you. One thing about the Hispanic community is we're very family-oriented, that is. We're the youngest, fastest-growing population in Lubbock, almost forty percent now. Our school enrollment for LISD is almost sixty-two percent. Unfortunately, we have a lot of deficiencies in leadership. We need more folks representing us in different boards and commissions and whatnot. But these are just a handful of the folks that serve our community, serve in our community, and have led our community. And with that, I would like to recognize all these folks for National Hispanic Heritage Month, that is, running from September the fifteenth to October fifteenth. This is a time when we, as a nation, celebrate and recognize the immeasurable contributions of our citizens of Hispanic descent. The City of Lubbock recognizes and is grateful for the innumerable ways Hispanic Americans enrich our city, as well as our state, our nation, and through our diverse cultures, which we have a very diverse culture in our Latino community as well. We have incredible stories and warm traditions, and we certainly would not be the Lubbock that we are and that we know and love without the phenomenal ideas, creations, ingenuity, prosperity, and knowledge that our Hispanic American neighbors showcase. It is my honor to present this special proclamation and it reads like this. Now, therefore, I'm going to, lo voy a ser en español, puedo? I'm just kidding. Which by the way, our mayor does speak Spanish and he passed the test earlier when I said, I se chiflo. Not him personally. It means that somebody got spoiled. Okay, never mind, long story. But now therefore, we the mayor, your city councilwoman, Kristi Martinez Garcia, that would be me, and city council, our wonderful city council of the great city of Lubbock, do hereby recognize the month of September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month. In Lubbock and ask all citizens to join us in celebrating and acknowledging Hispanic American culture, heritage and contributions in our city and across the United States. And we reflect upon the immeasurable contributions that Hispanic Americans have made in our community. And it is dated this fifth day of September. We have, we're going to be working with local media, some of it up here. And we're going to be showcasing a lot of our events during that month. We invite you to partake and be a part of it. We've got several special festivals, receptions, lots of activities throughout the city. And again, pick up your copy of Latino Lubbock Magazine or any of the other media. We are excited to be a part of this community. And I know we have a mariachi here that he isn't Hispanic, but he's standing or sitting right there. Will you wave? You know who you are. There you go. He knows the songs of our culture and so you see, you don't have to be Hispanic, but that's the thing about our community is that we do embrace others and we hope that you will embrace these folks. Thank you so much and God bless. Okay, I'm going to, we're going to take you back there and then just give you for Los Hermanos, Fiesta de Llano, so for Lulac and everybody else, so we, yes. Oh yeah, we need a, here.
Sorry, Kristi, I didn't mean to jump up. I wasn't trying to upstage you there, but you did such a good job with the media. I was like, gosh, I better go and get mine started because there's no way I could follow that. So that's why I was jumping up like that. Good afternoon, everybody. It's my honor today. Actually, I'm going to get to start with, um, a small business, a very special small business in our community. And, uh, if we can get started, who else here with Tom and Bingo's? Come on up. Ian. I think we've met before. You know, Lubbock is fortunate that our whole, our economy, the backbone of our economy is small businesses. And I think it's cool that we're going to recognize a great one here today. So, um, Tom and Bingo's Hickory pit barbecue, known for its variety of delicious barbecue offerings, has been a beloved Lubbock institution for 75 years. There's nothing like the smell of smoke when you drive down 34th Street. The restaurant recently received the prestigious Texas Treasure Business Award, marking its significant contribution to Texas culinary and cultural heritage. Countless patrons have formed deep connections with the restaurant, the food and the people who work there. And current owners Kristi and Ian Timmons have gracefully upheld the restaurant's legacy while maintaining its commitment to excellence. Suddenly I'm very hungry. It is my honor to recognize Tom and Bingo's Hickory pit barbecue for their enduring service and contributions to the Lubbock community. Now, therefore, we the mayor and the city council of Lubbock, Texas, do hereby extend our heartfelt congratulations and special recognition to Tom and Bingo's Hickory pit barbecue in Lubbock. And we encourage all citizens to join us in applauding the fine institution for their Texas Treasure Business Award, to thank them for the mouthwatering flavors that have united generations and enriched our city's culture for 75 years and to wish them many more years of success. It's dated today, the fifth of September, 2023. Congratulations. Next time bring samples. All right, next on my list this afternoon is National Service Dog Month. So here's, who's here with National Service Dog Month? Awesome. Who's, go up here and tell us, introduce us. Who is this?
This is Rose. She's with Canine Companions.
All right. Hi Rosie. You're a good looking pup. Do what? Don't you like me? Is this fun? So, September is National Service Dog Month. In the United States, 16,000 service dogs provided much needed support in the fields of healthcare, criminal justice, rehabilitation and education. Canine companions stand as a pioneer nonprofit provider of expertly trained service dogs and is specialized in forming strong bonds between dogs and their owners, empowering them to lead more independent lives. It is appropriate to recognize Canine Companions and the Yellow Caped Raiders Puppy Raising Club at the Texas Tech University for their work in training service dogs and bringing awareness to the benefits of these wonderful companions. It is my honor to present service dogs and canine companions with a special recognition certificate. Now, therefore, we the mayor and the city council of the great city of Lubbock, do hereby declare the month of September as National Service Dog Month in Lubbock. And we encourage all citizens to join in recognizing, recognizing the service dogs who work hard to better the life of their human and understanding the benefits of tasked trained service dogs and in thanking the organizations such as Canine Companions and Yellow Caped Raiders, who work to train service dogs to be ready and available to always help a friend in need. It's dated today, the fifth day of September, 2023. It's signed by all the mayor, all the mayor and all the members of the Lubbock City Council. And I felt, well, I'm sorry, introduce yourself.
I'm Andrea Mendez.
Okay, and, oh, and we met Rosie. Okay, awesome. Congratulations. Next up, it is my pleasure to recognize Big Brothers and Big Sisters, Melissa and Ryan. Who's here for Big Brothers, Big Sisters? Good afternoon. Come on up. Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Lubbock has been a pillar in our community, offering mentorship to over 100,000 children since 1970. Their core mission revolves around enriching the lives of young people from single parent and non-traditional families by fostering meaningful adult friendships. The organization has recently been honored with the 2023 Big Brothers, Big Sisters of America Quality Award. This accolade given by Big Brothers, Big Sisters of America National Leadership Council acknowledges excellence in mentoring programs. Out of, out of 225 Big Brothers, Big Sisters organizations across the country, Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Lubbock stands as one of the top 30 recipients of this distinguished award. The city of Lubbock proudly recognizes this significant achievement and the lasting impact the organization has on our community's youth. It is my honor to present this certificate and thank you for your service to our city. It will read, now therefore, we the mayor and the city council of the great city of Lubbock, do hereby offer special recognition to Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Lubbock and encourage all citizens to join us in congratulating them on receiving the 2023 Big Brothers, Big Sisters of America Quality Award. To commend Big Brothers and Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Lubbock for providing comprehensive, effective services to Lubbock's youth and wish them many more impactful days. And it's dated today, the fifth day of September, 2023. Congratulations. Thank you for being here.
All right. Next up on our list today is our Lubbock Music Club, who's celebrating their 100th anniversary. Who's here from our Lubbock Music Club? Y'all come on up. Thank y'all for being here. Yes, y'all come on up. Absolutely. So the Lubbock Music Club was founded in 1923 and it has served as a cornerstone of musical culture and education in Lubbock over the past 100 years. The club's contributions to our community are numerous and invaluable, including music appreciation, education, providing annual scholarships for students and sponsoring and staging concerts with musicians from near and far. This group has helped shape the Lubbock music scene we all know and love, organizing the Lubbock Little Symphony, now known as the Lubbock Symphony Orchestra, as well as creating the annual presentation of Handel's Messiah. On their centennial, we honor not only the club, but its members, who have had a transformative impact on our community, extending their influence from local Lubbock scene to state and national stages, including leadership roles in the Texas Federation of Music Clubs. It is my honor today to present them this special recognition. So now therefore, we the mayor and city council of the great city of Lubbock, do hereby recognize the Lubbock Music Club's 100th anniversary and encourage all of our citizens to join in congratulating and supporting this extraordinary Lubbock organization and its members who have added so much to the culture of our city and thank them for giving so much of their time and energy to promote Americans' music and musicians. Dated this day, the fifth day of September, 2023. Thank you. All right, next up is our Texas Tech MPA program. I believe Daniel and Era are here today. Thank you guys. Don't, don't be shy. Come on, I don't bite. Not today anyways. All right. So thank you guys for being here. For 50 years, Texas Tech University's MPA program has successfully taught, guided and graduated hundreds of administrators in a variety of fields. Organizations across the state and nation know that students from Tech's MPA program are prepared to manage and administer public and nonprofit programs in a dynamic, ever-changing world. It is appropriate to recognize the Texas Tech University's MPA program as they celebrate their 50th anniversary. So today, it is my honor and pleasure to present this special proclamation to them. Now therefore, we the mayor and city council of the great city of Lubbock, do hereby recognize the Texas Tech University Master of Public Administration Program's 50th anniversary and encourage all Lubbock citizens to join us in applauding the program's history of success to extend our best wishes to all students, professors and administrators in the program who work relentlessly to achieve and maintain the highest standards and to wish them many more years of quality education for students around the world. It's dated this day, September 5th, 2023. All right, and then last but not least of our, uh, our group recognitions today is our 555 Foundation. And I think our own Fire Chief, Chief Ogerson is going to be accepting today. Thanks for being here, Chief. Good to see you. All right, guys. Emergency responders every day play a critical role in preserving the safety of our roads and highways through their unwavering commitment to public service. The state of Texas has enacted move over and slow down laws to protect these responders while they perform their duties on the roadside. The 555 Foundation is taking a proactive step to further public awareness of these laws. They will host their annual 555 move over, slow down rally on Saturday, October 7th, at the South Plains Mall parking lot, underlining the universal importance of these Texas laws and across the nation. In honoring the brave legacy of Lubbock first responders, including firefighter Eric Hill and police officer Nicholas Reyna, who tragically lost their lives, and firefighter Matt Dawson, who was severely injured in the line of duty, it is my honor to present Emergency Responders and the 555 Foundation with a special recognition certificate. We the mayor and the city council of the great city of Lubbock recognize their indispensable contributions to road safety and public awareness. Now therefore, in honor of the heroic legacies of Lubbock first responders, such as firefighter Eric Hill and police officer Nicholas Reyna, who were tragically killed, and firefighter Matt Dawson, who was seriously injured in the line of duty at the scene of an accident, we the mayor and the city council of the great city of Lubbock recognize 555 Move Over and Slow Down Rally Day in Lubbock and encourage all citizens to support this event on Saturday, October 7th. And remember to drive safely, move over and slow down your vehicle in recognition of all emergency vehicles on the side of the road. Dated this day, September 5th, 2023. Now I might hand it back over to our prestigious mayor.
All right, so we've got some board appointments we're going to recognize and then some employee recognitions. And so at this time, when I call your name, if you would please step forward. We've got Gerald, the man, the myth, the legend, Bruce Boyd, Alice Lazada, Heather Keister and David Gashin. They are to our Appointments Advisory Board. If you'd please step forward. We also have Dr. Laura Johnson with the Board of Health. Donovan Beckwith with Building Board of Appeals. Marion McGuire, Jason Madrid with the Citizens Traffic Commission. Betsy Bass with Civic Lubbock, Inc. Alan Hawley and Tilman Hurt with the Comprehensive Plan Oversight Committee. Janice Henderson, Henry Tarango with Keep Lubbock Beautiful Advisory Committee. Eddie Kirkpatrick with the Libraries Board. There's Eddie. Sitting on that back row back there, Eddie? Wayne Kahoot, Lori Manning and Jeff Jones with the Lubbock Water Advisory Commission. Donald Stubbs and Jerry Moorhead with the Permit and License Appeal Board. Bayonetta Jordan with the Urban Design and Historic Preservation Commission. James Muston with Lubbock Re-Development Authority Board of Directors. And finally, Christopher Berger with the North Point Pid Advisory Board. We can't tell you all how thankful- We can't tell you all how thankful we are to these citizens that step up with these committees that are so vital to our community and all that they do. They take time out of their day and their nights, and they are on these boards, and we could not run the city without our boards. And so, thank you all very much for being here today. (applause) But I'm also excited with some of the things that have come to fruition. And right at, I guess shortly after the completion of the 2040 Plan, council was reminded of the fact that attention would be paid to the northern and eastern portions of the city. And the suggestion was that the way to do that would be to have those citizens, along with the city, work with a neighborhood planner to have things happen. And I have to say that I was definitely on board with that wagon. And as a result, we had the opportunity to hire a young man, and as Wilson Bowling makes his way here, I just want to share some things about Wilson that many of you may or may not know. It's about the neighborhoods, Wilson. Wilson has spent an enormous amount of time getting to know the citizens that reside in the northern and eastern portions of the city, and attending neighborhood meetings and all of that, and picnics and everything that would take place, neighborhood night out and everything, and becoming an appendage, I'll say, to those neighborhoods. So much so that citizens look for Wilson when it's time to have those meetings. I know the Chapman neighborhood, he was out of town or something. I think he was trying to get married or got married or was doing something like that, and he didn't show up for our meeting, and we were quite bothered by it. But that's how much of an influence, an important part he has been with so many of the neighborhoods that make up these communities. And I know we're here to talk about a certificate that he received, but I would be remiss, as a councilperson from part of those areas, to not let the city manager, the remaining portion of the council, know the work that Wilson Bowling hit the ground doing. So I didn't know if he had moved into Chapman Hill or what, because he was always around there, and so he has been an important part to the communities. He, along with the consultants who were put in place to help the Jackson May-Hawn and Dumbarton Manhattan neighborhoods, began to create their plan. So I just want to recognize him, and if you'll hear me as I read the additional words. Said, "Our city's neighborhood planner," that's you, Wilson, "recently obtained an American Institute of Certified Planner Certificate from the American Planning Association. This certification demonstrates Wilson's personal and professional commitment to neighborhood planning, as well as his knowledge and his work experience." And I have to say, yes and yes. "Wilson's knowledge and planning supports Lubbock's continued growth while ensuring our existing neighborhoods remain the heartbeat of our city." It is my honor to present you all with, present Wilson, oh, they say it all, with the special rec, this special recognition, and it reads, "Now therefore, we the mayor and the city council of the great city of Lubbock, Texas, USA, do hereby recognize thee, Wilson Bowling, and encourage all citizens to join us in applauding Wilson for obtaining his American Institute of Certified Planner Certificate, thanking him for his dedication to smart and efficient growth and revitalization in Lubbock, and wishing him continued success as he stays hooked in the great city of Lubbock, Texas, and exactly, and he definitely has created and will maintain a partnership with the neighborhoods of this city as well. If you would join us in applauding Wilson Bowling."
Next up is Ms. Genesis St. Clair. So many of y'all may not know, before I worked my way up here to City Council, that I was actually employed by the city of Lubbock way back when, when I graduated, or graduated college. We're not going to talk about how long ago that was. But I actually worked at the health department, and I started as a microbiologist in the lab there, and it was one of the best experiences I had as a first-time grown-up after graduating college. So we're so happy you're here, and I love the health department. They have a special place in my heart. So Ms. Genesis St. Clair is a Prevention Specialist at the health department and was recently awarded the prestigious CCP Prevention Specialist of the Year for the state of Texas. This title recognizes Genesis's exceptional commitment and success in building and sustaining community coalitions to prevent public health challenges. She also created the Youth Coalition, empowering young people to work on policy changes and community events to promote mental health awareness and substance use prevention methods. Fittingly, Genesis also won the mayor's parking spot for the month of September after being nominated by her peers for her hard work. Have you parked in his spot? Oh. You need to, you needed... Okay. We're going to have to do it again. So it is my honor today to present you with the certificate, and thank you so much for your service to our city. Now therefore, we the mayor and the city council of the great city of Lubbock do hereby recognize Genesis St. Clair, and encourage all citizens to join us in thanking Genesis for her dedication and service to the city of Lubbock. And we congratulate Genesis on receiving the CCP Prevention Specialist of the Year Award, and wish her continued success as she works to strengthen community infrastructure and provide connections and resources for individuals battling substance use. Today is dated this day, the fifth day of September 2023. Yes.
It's my honor this afternoon to recognize Maggie Beltran. Maggie, you're right up front. Hi, Maggie. The city of Lubbock Building Safety Department's Maggie Beltran has recently earned her residential building inspector certification from the International Code Council. Earning this certification involves rigorous preparation, has proven her extensive skills, commitment to the profession, and knowledge and safety requirements in enforcement. We are fortunate and grateful for her extensive service and dedication to the profession and to the safety of our community. So it is now my honor to present you with this special recognition. Now therefore, we the mayor and the city council of the great city of Lubbock do hereby recognize Maggie Beltran, and encourage all citizens to join us in thanking Maggie for her dedication and service to the city of Lubbock through ensuring our structures remain safe, congratulating Maggie on completing the ICC Residential Building Inspector Certification, and wishing her continued success at the city. Dated this day, the fifth day of September 2023. Help me congratulate Maggie.
I'm always so proud of our employees, and I'm so glad that citizens stayed today to listen to all of the achievements that they have obtained and that they worked so hard for. And the next group is no exception, and I want to, I know they want to get out of here by 5 o'clock because it's almost time to go home. But this group, the next two that I'm going to introduce you to, they sound like they could probably be performers, but they're some of our employees. And today, receiving these recognition is Dusty Delashaw and Tori Gray. Don't they sound like, like they could be a band or something? Will y'all come up here, ladies? Thank y'all for being here. And they work so hard in our community development department, so, so hard. Dusty Delashaw and Tori Gray have been recent, or have recently earned their Housing Counselor certifications from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development while serving in the city of Lubbock's Community Development Department. These certifications equip them to offer valuable guidance, and they do, and resources to homeowners, renters, and others to best address their different housing needs. Their dedication to skill advancement highlights their commitment to our community's well-being, and the city of Lubbock is fortunate to have such dedicated public servants focused on improving residents' lives. It is my honor to present this certificate to both of you ladies, and thank you for your valuable service to our city. Now therefore, we the mayor and city council of the great city of Lubbock do hereby recognize Dusty Delashaw and Tori Gray and company. It's such a great names. And encourage all citizens to join us in thanking them for their dedication and service to the city of Lubbock, to congratulate them on obtaining their HUD Housing Counselor certification, and to wish them continued success, dated this fifth day of September 2023. All right. And now we have two more individuals that also are doing an outstanding job, and if I can have Jamie Magar. Where's Jamie? Did I say that right? I said it like a Texan. I'm sorry. And Lily Hernandez. Thank you both for being here. The city of Lubbock Building Safety Department's Jamie Magar and Lily Hernandez have recently earned their commercial building inspector certifications from the International Code Council, and not an easy thing to do. Similar to Ms. Beltran's certification, earning the commercial certificate is no small feat and proves just how dedicated and knowledgeable these professionals are in building safety procedures. The city of Lubbock is fortunate to have such an outstanding team of public servants. It is my honor to present you both with a special recognition. Now therefore, we the mayor and the city council of the great city of Lubbock do hereby recognize Jamie Magar and Lily Hernandez, and encourage all citizens to join us in thanking them for their dedication and service to the city of Lubbock, congratulating them on obtaining their commercial building inspector certificate, that's a mouthful, and wishing them continued success of the city of Lubbock that is growing so fast, so I can just imagine how busy y'all are, dated this fifth day of September 2023. Congratulations.
(applause) Lily is also in our team.
Where's Scott? Scott, there you are. Come on up here. So if you fly, and you fly into our airport, you're going to be really grateful for this, especially if you're landing at night, right, Scott? All right, so Scott recently completed extensive training to become an airfield-ground lighting certified airport professional. Yeah, that's a big thing, right there. So now when there's lights, we can all give it all to Scott, right? Grateful for him. He, training, he went through industry and professionals, allowing him to gain a wide array of skills that's led him to become an astute model of aviation professionalism in our city. And so because of his persistence and his continued drive to want to be better and do what's best for not only the airport, but for our community, not only the citizens here, but also those that visit here, want to land safely at night. So we're very grateful to you and want to present you with the certificate today. I know you're thrilled to be standing up here and getting all this attention, right? I can just tell. But we do want to congratulate you. So we the mayor and city council of the great city of Lubbock extend a special recognition to you, Scott, and congratulate you for earning the airfield-ground lighting airport professional certificate, and we applaud you for your achievement and success at the airport, and wish you all the best with the success and your continued endeavors. Thank you very much for going through all this and working for us. (applause) Do you get to claim overtime for being here late? Tommy, come on up. The man right here. Always greets me in the morning.
How do you, Mr.?
How are you, sir? So Tommy's with the engineering department, and he's completed the very demanding process of becoming a licensed professional engineer. That's a pretty big deal. Started with the city and the Building Safety Department as a plans examiner, and has achieved several notable positions, culminating in his recent promotion to Civil Engineer I in July. So my brother's a professional engineer. I can tell you how much work it takes for all these men and women in that department to get that license. It's an incredible feat. So Tommy's known for always greeting people with a smile, his professionalism and workmanship, and he stands as a role model for his dedication to challenging projects, his commitment to the community, and he's become an invaluable asset to us here at the city. So we want to present you with the certificate and tell you that we, the mayor and the city council of the great city of Lubbock, will recognize you, Tommy Harms, and encourage all of the citizens and employees and everyone here to congratulate him for his tremendous achievement of successfully earning his license, license to practice as a professional engineer in Texas, and thank you for your years of service and your dedication to this community. Appreciate you very much. Thank you. (applause) All right, last, lastly, but certainly not least, let's get the pipeline maintenance crew up here. Come on. This group said they wanted to drag this out along with Scott so we could get a little overtime over here, Jared. A little time and a half. Come on, y'all. You get cookies afterwards. All right, so let's start down there. Everybody introduce yourselves, just so we can put you on the spot. Go ahead, let's go.
I'm Brad Breeden, Water and Tiller Maintenance Manager.
This is Elvin Martinez.
Oh, Josh.
Josh.
Martin Martinez.
David Bell.
Tyler Holland.
Paul O'Grady.
Tommy Urie.
Chris Vlazos.
I'm Joe Winkler.
Man, that's right.
Ed and Mike.
Thank you, guys. So, you know, we got a lot of, we have a lot of heroes in our community, but these are the unsung heroes that they work round, round the clock. And when there's a problem, we don't see them, because they just go out and do their job. And they don't ask for a lot of notoriety, and that's why we want to put them on the spot and make them feel a little uncomfortable standing up here getting their pictures taken, right? But recently, this crew demonstrated the highest level of service because they worked diligently to fix a water mainline for LISD at 3:00 a.m. in the morning to, so we could guarantee that those kids over at Overton were able to have clean drinking water and other water for other, other uses, obviously. And so, you know, they just go out and do their job, and there's so many people in our community, and not just in the city, but so many unsung heroes, that they just go daily to do their jobs, and then we want to take the time to appreciate you, men, for all that you did that day and what you do every day. Y'all have got a great crew, and we're really proud of. Y'all have got a great crew, and we're really proud of you. So we, we the mayor and the city council of the great city of Lubbock, recognize the city of Lubbock's Pipeline Maintenance Crew, and encourage the citizens to join us in thanking them for their extraordinary work in repairing the necessary infrastructure to keep the city operating. Applaud them for their quick response and professionalism in crisis situations, and we're fortunate to have them. And that's dated September 5th of 2023. Let's give them another round of applause. All right, thank y'all for coming this afternoon. We're adjourned.